Good afternoon and welcome to the forty-third meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our commission reporter. And if you're here to testify on any of the items that are agenda, please come forward, be sworn in by Mr. Rai, and introduce yourself and spell your name also. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yes, Chair. Motion for the approval of the minutes of the thirty-sixth meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The minutes of the thirty-sixth meeting are approved. Let's move into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one. Application number one-nine dash one-five-six-one-nine from Ohana Enterprises LLC.
Good afternoon. John Pinales, J-O-H-N-P-I-N-A-L-E-S.
Chris Pinales, C-H-R-A-S-P-I-N-A-L-E-S.
Thank you. Mr. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And you have been provided with a copy of testimony coming from the Waikia-Waikia Wicmore Village Neighborhood Board that was provided to us this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Please come forward, ma'am.
Hello, Chair and Commission members. Jeannie Ishikawa, J-E-A-N-N-E. Last name is Ishikawa, I-S-H-I-K-A-W-A. I'm the Chair of the Waikia-Wicmore Village Neighborhood Board, number twenty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to give testimony in support of this application. We had our meeting on Monday night and we had a lively conversation or discussion on this, but in the end, we voted six in favor, two against, and one absent. Request was made by the Board that one of us attend this meeting to just explain the conditions that we wanted you folks to consider. We recently have had other issues of liquor consumption at one of our other Waikia restaurants. So we have asked, you know, we had asked Honolulu Tacos to provide security at their ingress or egress to the restaurant to ensure that no alcohol leaves their premises. We had asked that to ensure that the, that there would be, they would come back in six months if the license is issued, that they come back in six months to provide us a report on how the business is doing. And we also asked them to commit to keeping it a family-friendly restaurant.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any question? Testifier?
Yes. So for these conditions, would you like them to return and report back to you folks?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes. If it's issued to come back to us in six months.
Okay.
Because at the same time, then we are gonna evaluate how things are going on in that area. Because it is, the restaurant happens to be located in an area where there used to be high rates of incidences, you know, illegal activity. So we wanna just make sure things are gonna be going smoothly.
Okay. Unfortunately, we can't require them to report to you folks, but we can put a condition on there to have them report to us.
Okay.
But you can talk with them separately about coming before you folks as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mrs. Ishikawa, you also, I think you left out one condition that's mentioned on your letter, which was alcohol beverages served from eleven to nine P.M.
Oh, correct. I'm sorry. That is correct. So that's the current operating hours, and we had asked that they would maintain those hours to keep it a family-friendly establishment.
Was there any discussion about music or entertainment?
There was, but we were assured that it would be not very loud music. It would be entertaining music, but that they also wanted to be in compliance with the commission rules of in the event someone stands up to dance or whatnot. So we understood that.
Okay. Thank you.
A question on the, for the applicant's, the license investigator report notes at nine a.m. for this hour. Is that?
Nine a.m. is when we open, the restaurant opens. The lounge would open at from eleven to nine a.m.
Okay. The request is to possibly limit liquor sales from a specific point in time, but they will be open.
Correct. But liquor sales begin no earlier than eleven, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, we're fine with that.
Do we have any further questions or type of action?
Question. So I'm assuming, I think for the record, you guys are in agreement with the set conditions that the Neighborhood Board had requests or asked for.
Yes, ma'am. And I was the one that volunteered to go back within six months just to be sure that they were, that everything was satisfactory between us and the Board, just because of what has happened with other locations or other establishments. And we were well aware that that might kind of revolve on us, and I feel that it has. And I just wanna be sure, assure you and assure Jeannie that we intend to do things differently.
Very good.
Very good. It was a good meeting.
It's the best-case scenario then, yeah?
Yes, it was. It was very good dialogue.
That did, that was a family-oriented restaurant in the beginning.
Correct. That is correct.
Yes, yes. Which turned into a mechanical rodeo.
Oh, oh, that was. Oh, okay. I didn't say anything.
Now, we've weathered the storm. Okay. With that being said, Commissioners, what would you, what is your pleasure?
Okay. Motion to convene into executive session. Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. And now in the executive session. Okay, thank you. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-six-one-nine with the following conditions. One is that the licensee will be on a three-month probationary period and pro, I'm sorry, six month, I'm sorry, six month, sorry, six-month probationary period. Licensee is to provide the commission a three-month and a six-month review, written, I'm sorry, written review, written report to include any business issues, any complaints, anything out of the ordinary, so written only, no need to appear. Okay? And second condition will be that alcohol to be served from the hours of eleven o'clock a.m. to nine P.M.
I second the motion.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one. Application number one-nine dash one-five-six-one-nine is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving into license applications, special license application. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-nine-nine dash one through one-nine dash one-six-three-nine-nine dash four inclusive.
Chairperson, Commissioners, Mr. Rai, Gabriel Provenza on behalf of the applicant, Sedexo America LLC. To my right is Mark Nakamoto. He's the Vice President. Yeah, no changes to the investigative report. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay. Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-six-three-nine-nine dash one through one-six-three-nine-nine dash four.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-nine-nine dash one through one-nine, one-six-three-nine-nine dash four are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Provenza.
Following agenda item number three. Application number one-nine dash one-six-six-two-six dash one through one-nine dash one-six-six-two-six dash twenty-six.
Good afternoon, Chairperson, Commissioners, Mr. Rai. Gabriel Provenza on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Mark Nakamoto, the Vice President. And again, no changes to the investigative report. And just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners?
These are a lot of beats.
Yeah. These are for special general licenses on a total of seventy-eight different days.
What's it for, Mr. Provenza?
So this is basically a stopgap measure for this lounge at the airport. We have a dispenser application in the works that's been submitted. We understand, you know, because of the number of applications that are in mind, it could be a while, so we're doing this in the interim.
Okay. And was there previously a liquor license at this location?
No.
No. Okay.
These are tioses.
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-six-six-two-six dash one to one-nine dash one-six-six-two-six dash two-six.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three. Application number one-nine dash one-six-six-two-six dash one through one-nine dash one-six-six-two-six dash two-six inclusive are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you back for the dispenser.
Calling agenda item number four. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-three from the Ripple of Smiles LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of the Ripple of Smiles LLC. To my right is Tan Nguyen, the owner. We have no changes to this investigative report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-three.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number five.
Seven.
Pardon?
Seven.
Seven out of order.
Seven out of order. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Calling agenda item number seven. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-zero from the Ripple of Smiles LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of the Ripple of Smiles LLC. To my right is Tan Nguyen, the owner. We have no changes to this report. If the commission has questions, I can answer and address the investigators.
Mr. Yoko Ta, this is off of Waialai and St. Louis H Drive, correct?
Correct. It's the former premise of the Frankie Fresh and the Fat Greek, which had one combined liquor license for two separate distinct spaces. We're applying for a temporary to cover the space that was formerly occupied by the Fat Greek.
And will you demo the wall or?
No. It's completely separate, separate entries.
Still?
Correct.
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-four.
Second.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-zero is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going back to agenda item number five, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number five. Application number one-nine dash one-five-nine-eight-seven from Double-A Mart LLC, YPO Shell and Food Mart, in the parking lot of YPO McDonald's.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Thomas Kim, K-I-M, authorized representative. Here today is Mr. Joseph Kim, K-I-M, President of the company.
And that's no relationship.
No relationship.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-five-nine-eight-seven.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five. Application number one-nine dash one-five-nine-eight-seven is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Coming down. Calling agenda item number six. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-zero-eight from Fuku Daya Global Works Corporation. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Ikuyo Kopa, I-K-U-Y-O-C-O-P-P-A, authorized agent for Fuku Daya Global Works.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
This is, you folks are gonna be taking over the current imamate?
Yes.
And this is near the university, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve application number one-nine dash one-six-three-zero-eight.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six. Application number one-nine dash one-six-three-zero-eight is approved.
Thank you.
Following agenda item number eight. Request number one-nine dash one-five-nine-four-seven from Nine Three Nine Entertainment LLC. We'll take that. Okay, we'll move that to the end of the agenda. Calling agenda item number nine. Request number one-nine dash one-six-zero-zero-one from Kona Blue Company. Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Terry Lee, Counsel for the applicant, I guess. I have reviewed the investigative report and just have a few comments regarding the apparent discrepancy regarding the 2016 appointment of Mr. Ha and Mr. Reed as managers. And so, if it pleases the commission, it really is a very technical misunderstanding, if you will, because on the mainland, a lot of these corporations, particularly ones that are publicly traded, when they operate their subsidiaries as an LLC, they designate these individuals as officers because they're part of the overall corporate organization. But in Hawaii, our LLCs and the DCCA do not recognize officers. They're managers. So when they appointed these two individuals as officers, the DCCA treated that as a designation as managers. And so when the licensee submitted their request for approval of these two individuals as officers, which the commission approved, by the way, it was designated as officers. But then later, when we corrected the DCCA records, or we notified the commission that they were really managers, not officers, because officers aren't recognized as that in an LLC entity, I think the investigator, you know, thought it was something different. But it really isn't. It's just nomenclature as to what they're referred to. And the commission did get the personal history forms for those two individuals, vetted them, approved them, but as quote-unquote "officers," not as managers. So I don't think it truly constitutes.
Okay. So can we hear from, Mr., excuse me, can we hear from licensing supervisor, just to get his take on it?
Sure. Supervising Investigator, Daniel Sato. As far as I understand this situation goes, those two individuals that Mr. Lee is representing was not vetted because they were reported as officers, not managers of the LLC.
So do we have anything, any criminal history or background checks for them?
We do have the PHAs for both individuals. However, at that time, it wasn't recognized as managers of the LLC. So according to the statute 28141, they were never vetted. So he is correct, however, that they did report to us, but it was just, like you said, it was a technical error and it was not reported and vetted.
Motion to convene into executive session to speak with legal counsel. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We're now in the executive session. Okay, we are, excuse me, back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or licensing supervisor or type of action?
Type of action. Motion to approve request number one-nine dash one-six-zero-zero-one with the condition that the two members are managers in question do the necessary background check and vetting process.
Yeah. The only thing, the only thing, I was gonna say this before you went into executive session is that Derek Ha is no longer a manager, so Marcus Reed is the only individual that remains a manager, and we have submitted his information in connection with the current request.
Including a criminal background check?
Well, we provide the paperwork for that. Yes.
Well, I would just say that any outstanding managers that need to go through the complete vetting process, need to go through the complete vetting process prior to issuing the license.
And would you also state for the record, Mr. Lee, that to the best of your knowledge, neither of these individuals are convicted felons?
Yes.
So motion revised with the verbiage provided by Vice Chairman.
Can I second the motion?
Then moved in.
Yeah. Yeah, you second.
Okay. Here we go. Agenda item number nine. Did I move?
No.
Okay, I got it, right? I wanted to make sure you guys all pay your attention. I vote aye.
Wait, wait, wait. You need to hold the vote.
No.
Huh?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine. Request number one-nine dash one-six-zero-zero-one is approved with the conditions stated in the motion.
Thank you very much.
It's been a long, long day. Calling agenda item number ten. Commissioner Lee?
Yes, Chair. To a possible conflict, I'm gonna have to recede myself in this agenda item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission.
Keuchy, may I call the agenda item? I know, it's been a long day. Who'll get better at this?
Trying to keep with the script.
Yeah, okay.
Calling agenda item number ten. Request number one-nine dash one-six-five-five-three from FEC, Kamakke Partners LLC.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Kate Keuchy for the licensee. This is an extension of a catering application that started in September 2015 to refresh the commission's recollection. This is providing food and alcohol to Kings Lual LLC, which is operated on the grounds of the Waikiki Aquarium. It's approximately an area of about seventy-five feet by hundred-twenty feet. They run the Lual from 5:15 p.m. to 7:45 p.m. There are about a hundred fifty people. The alcohol is dispersed from a bar area where they check identification. Generally, in the past, the tourists buy one to two drinks at the most. We had hoped that the operator, which is Kings Lual, would be able to get their own catering, but that's not gonna happen for a while. They've had some challenges getting their own liquor license, have a physical location at Buck's Alley, and they've had some issues trying to get the landlord's consent. So that's why we've gone back, and we may have to do this through the end of the year, unfortunately. But this is only through July 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Keuchy.
Motion to approve request number one-nine dash one-six-five-three-three. I'm sorry, one-six, one-six-five-five-three, yeah.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten. Request number one-nine dash one-six-five-five-three is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Keuchy.
Do we have Commissioner Lee back, please? Calling agenda item number eleven. Request number one-nine dash one-six-five-nine-eight from Robert A. Uyoka on behalf of American Renaissance Academy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Mr. Rai, Robert Uyoka on behalf of American Renaissance Academy. Presenting my right, Mr. Damon Hudson, Chairman of the Board of Governors. First name D-A-I-M-O-N, last name H-U-D-S-O-N.
Commissioners?
Mr. Uyoka?
Yes.
Welcome again.
Nice to see you again. Yes.
Just walk us through the new premise.
Okay, we wanted to do a beer garden concept, separate from the previous premises. In our submission, we did outline the previous premises in yellow and the new premises in red. In between those areas, we would have a buffer area, separation area, to prevent the passing of any alcohol. One of the questions would be if the applicability of Section 28160 Subsection B regarding change of circumstances. We understand that because it is a different area that we are not required to show substantial change of circumstances. In any event, I did outline those in our written submission along with the site plan. Just wanted to stress that we do wanna still, even though it's called a beer garden in our submission, we more use that in the general sense. We still want to proceed with the general license, serving beer, wine, and distilled spirits and what have you. But just the term, the term beer garden, I'll just use kind of in general sense, not in a literal sense.
Term of art, if you will.
Term of art. It's a good way to put it. Thank you. So I did outline the various changes that we have, nonetheless, just how it's different other than new premises, different promoter, change of type of entertainment, no student participation, change of the floor plan, change of the security plan. I think we have eighteen security people assigned, and we put it on our floor plan where they are gonna be assigned. Also have the portable restrooms. I think I counted eighteen or so, you know, eighteen or so, or fifteen portable restrooms in that beer garden area. We will also do the, as far as the wristbands and checking ID, of course, to prevent the sale of any liquor minors.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Then moved in second. I vote in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. We're now in the executive session. Okay, thank you. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners?
Yep. Okay, motion to approve request number one-nine, one dash one-six-five-nine-eight with the following condition. Commission requires a post-event written report, written, so no need to appear. No later than thirty days from the date of event to include the following. Number one is attending numbers. Number two, to include any incident reports. And number three, any complaints from the community to keep us aware of that.
I second the motion.
Then moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven. Request number one-nine dash one-six-five-nine-eight is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the attention. Thank you.
Good luck. Best of luck out there. Calling agenda item number twelve. Request number one-nine dash one-six-six-nine-four from Diamond Head Theaters.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Colin Mewa appearing on behalf of Diamond Head Theater as their authorized representative. I am a board member and also an officer of their executive committee. I'm here to support their request for the I'm here to support their request for the waiver of the requirement for submission of the annual personal history and affidavit, criminal history, record clearance, and fingerprint card for all directors except for those directors who serve on the executive committee. My understanding is that the reason for the request is that we have a number of directors. The real decision-making authority and control resides in the executive committee. We're a nonprofit, we have a number of directors on the board, I think there are about thirty-eight other directors who are also executive committee members.
Thank you. And you would state for the record that none of these individuals are convicted felons?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Mewa, so on this executive committee that you mentioned, that is the decision-making body, how many members are on that?
I believe there are six at the current time.
Okay, and are they, are they able to provide us with a necessary personal history affidavit and criminal history, criminal background check?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just the members that are non-decision-making in what we're concerned with, which is alcohol, the service and sale of alcohol, so they're not involved with that at all?
They're not, okay.
Thank you.
And we're looking at indefinitely? Yeah? Mr. Mewa, just to be clear on your request, you're looking, you're looking at indefinitely, right?
That's the request, yes.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
They moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we are now in executive session. Okay, thank you, we are now back on the official record, Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve request number one nine dash one six six nine four with the following condition, that the waiver will be subject to only five years, and it would be only, and it is, it applies to any and all executive committee members. Oh, it does not apply? With the exception of, I'm sorry, with the exception of any executive committee member.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, request number one nine dash one six six nine four is approved with the conditions stated on the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen. Request number one nine dash one six six eight oh from Robert A. Uyoka on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Mr. Ry Robert Uyoka on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company, President Tuma Wright, Ms. Chris Wong, she is the senior operations director, first name C.H.R.I.S., last name W.O.N.G. And this relates to a, we have an underlying dispenser liquor license, dispenser liquor license filed with the commission.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six six eight zero.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six six eight zero is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one six six eight one from Robert A. Uyoka on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Robert Uyoka on behalf of the HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company, President Tuma Wright, Ms. Chris Wong, she's a senior operations director. This relates to an underlying restaurant liquor license application which has been filed with the commission.
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one six six eight one.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one six six eight one is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mewa, thank you.
Calling agenda item number fifteen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lu.
To my right is the Vice President, Mr. Atushi Niwasa. Behind her, behind him is Nada Thai, T-H-A-I, and she is a translator in KCT, with a record of flagway in Wisconsin. We have no additions to the investigative report. Normally, when you do a final inspection, he makes changes to it, but in this case, he figured it'd be better if we just got a new plan to reflect how it looks.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee?
No, you do, because they have changed the floor plan or the footprint, so you do need to approve that.
All right, Derek?
Yep.
Yep, okay, very good. Type of action?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four eight five one.
Second.
They moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one four eight five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a, calling agenda item number sixteen. Oahu Nui.
Aloha, Lieutenant Commissioner, June night only represented for Oahu Nui along with Raymond Ho, Jr., the promoter for the event.
Thank you. This is the thirty-day post-event report, Commissioners?
So how did it go? Good, yeah? How much attendance?
Two different, for one night, thirty-four hundred, the second night, forty-two hundred.
Oh, that's good.
And over.
Mm-hmm, that's good.
Any incidents or any complaints or?
Um, one incident regarding EMTs, there was somebody who was dehydrated, but they attended that person and they continued on at the event. And then there was also a, I guess, written off for someone being underage in an area that was designated for twenty-one and over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from enforcement, please?
Supervising Investigator, Captain Fontaine. So the only issue that we noticed at this event was there was a CNS issued to a minor that was in possession and consuming liquor inside the twenty-one and over area. She was not banded. And as a result of that violation, a violation was written to the licensee.
Those will be taken up at a future adjudication hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Anything else to add? Thank you.
It was, we were told that the person wasn't drinking and that they were just found.
Yeah, we had volunteers cleaning up that were underage, it was part of the volunteer group.
Okay, well, any violations that were issued will be addressed at a future adjudication hearing, so please make sure that you're checking to see when that hearing notice comes, okay?
Thank you.
And no action required?
No action.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Can I have a type of action for agenda items number seventeen through twenty-two inclusive?
Yes, Chair, motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items seventeen through twenty-two inclusive. Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, agenda items number seventeen through twenty-two are approved. Mr. Berg, can you just hold on one minute? No, no, you can stay there. Let me just have another call for, I know obviously nobody here. Just for the record, that was agenda item number eight?
Yes, yes.
Request number one nine dash one five nine four seven from Nine Three Nine Entertainment, DBA called Nine Three Nine.
We will reschedule.
Thank you. Assistant Administrator, all right. So let's move now into adjudication, and let's call agenda item number twenty-three, is that correct? Center plate.
Okay, well, good afternoon, Join Lee, Deputy Preparations Counsel appearing on behalf of Liquor Commission Prosecution for tonight's agenda items, or adjudication items.
Thank you, and excuse me.
Good afternoon, Thomas Berger appearing for the licensee, center plate. If it pleases the Chair and the board members, we have a bunch of items here, twenty-three through number?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Could we call them all at once? And the reason is because we have an agreement to move adjudication hearings off to, I believe, July eighteenth and?
Okay, hold on. Clara, you have an agreement with who?
Well, we have, we have an understanding that we're going to be moving them off, and the reason is because we only receive investigative reports today for all but two of the violations, so we need some time to review those, obviously with the licensee, determine what defenses are available.
So, Mr. Berger, are you going to be requesting a continuance for all of these items?
Yes.
Is that why you'd like to have them consolidated?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Neely?
Yes, that's correct. I have no objection to this continuance because he did just receive the reports.
Okay, so you need time to prepare?
Some time to prepare, yeah. And then I did want to raise just one other issue, you know, I was reviewing the?
Take action on the continuance, please, Dr. Berger.
Right, all right, okay. So motion to continue agenda items twenty-three through agenda item thirty-six inclusive to the next available date as agreed to the council, or do you have a date certain?
Right, we have a date, July eighteenth.
Okay. I revise the motion to continue agenda items twenty-three through thirty-six inclusive to July?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda items number twenty-three through thirty-six inclusive are continued until July eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
And Mr. Berger, you would like to add something?
I wanted to make a, I guess, a second request or a second oral motion. I was reviewing the rules of the Liquor Commission, rule three dash eighty-one dash nineteen point eleven, titled Powers of the Commission in Conducting Hearings. And if you go to subpart ten, it talks about the power of the commission to hold a pre-hearing conference, and the purposes for the pre-hearing conference could include for settlement or simplification of issues. And here, you know, the licensee is very interested in coming up with, I guess, an understanding with respect to what would be good faith under the rules for a situation where you have, for example, an event with, you know, thirty thousand people or more in attendance, and we wanted to, I guess, present certain issues after reviewing the investigative report to the commission before the adjudication hearings to try to simplify, hopefully move things along in a more efficient manner.
Ms. Hara, is he able to make that request orally, or do we have, do we need it to be agendized?
Typically, the request is made in written form. He has absolutely the right to request said pre-hearing conference, but we typically ask them, the individual, to submit it in writing, and then the text of that request would be placed on the appropriate agenda. You can designate in your request what agenda, what hearing date you want.
Okay, so I would, would you be able to submit every kind request?
Yes, absolutely.
So that we can take action on your request?
No problem, so I'll go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so no action is taken, right? Everything is from?
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Up to date on the agenda items?
Yes, so we're at thirty-seven. Thank you, Ms. Neely.
So we're at thirty-seven, thank you, Vice Chairman. Do we have any administrative matters?
None.
None, thank you, Mr. Carl.